Commissioners meeting for Thursday, September 10. Wayman, would you like to read the electronic?
Senator Governor Whitmer's Executive Order 2020-154. The County Board of Commissioners, in order to protect the public health, will conduct this meeting today via electronic communications. Any member of the public wishing to listen to the proceedings or provide public comment may do so by using the following internet connection or phone numbers and passcode, which is listed on the agenda posted on the screen there. Anyone disrupting the meeting by using offensive language or actions may be muted or removed from the meeting. You can signal your public comment through publiccomment@kentcountymail@kentcountymi.gov. Publiccomment@kentcountymi.gov via email.
Great, thank you so much. So, we have called the meeting to order. We're on to item two, roll call. And Madam Clerk, if you're there, could you please call the roll?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners Wooden. Womack. Voorhees.
Present.
Vonnk.
Here.
Teal. Tallin.
Here.
Vice Chair Stuck.
I'm here.
Commissioners Sparks.
Good morning, President.
Skaggs.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan. Frischner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioners Melton.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Lisa, you're muted for some reason.
That was odd.
I heard Coleman, and then?
She's still muted.
You're still muted.
Muted herself.
Is there somebody on the other end muting me? I keep pressing mute and it back unmute.
Probably have a hacker. I don't know.
You're unmuted now. We hear you. Commissioner Jones, are you here?
Here.
All right. Commissioners Hennessy.
Here.
Bukowski.
Present.
Breevy.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't know if the couple that were missing looks like Commissioner Wooden. On my screen, it says you're Ted Vonnk.
That is interesting. I don't know if that ever happened. I'm committing identity theft. I will change my name. I literally have no idea how that ever happened.
You are clearly here.
Commissioner Wooden, you are present. Is Commissioner Womack present? So, Madam Chair, you have 18 members present and one absent. You still have a quorum.
Okay, and I anticipate Commissioner Womack will join us soon. We are on to item three invocation. I'll call Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. Today I have a short prayer from a person by the name of Father Richard Rohr. He started a place called the Center for Action and Contemplation in Albuquerque, New Mexico in 1986. And I get a lot of wisdom and instigation from his and his group's work. Recently, they stated, or he stated, that inaction is not the opposite of contemplation. Reaction is. And so, we take a moment in our very busy trying to get on Zoom and living our disconnected lives. Just a moment of quiet so that we can respond to our community's needs with dignity and honor and as brothers and sisters. And so, we pray, oh great love, thank you for living and loving in us and through us. May all that we do flow from our deep connection with you and all beings. Help us become a community that courageously and vulnerably shares each other's burdens and the weight of glory. Listen to our hearts' longings for the healing of our world. Knowing you are hearing us better than we are speaking, we offer these prayers in all the holy names of God. Amen.
Great, great prayer. Thank you. Awesome. All right, we're on to item four, Pledge of Allegiance. Can you see the flag on the screen? That's possible. Or a flag somewhere? Great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. All right, we are on to public comment related to an agenda item. And I will ask staff to quickly look at our email inbox and also see if we have anyone, any hands up for agenda item issues. I don't see any participants.
I don't see any messages in the inbox, and there are no hands raised for public comment.
All right. Okay, as you'll see, we do have a lot of resolutions today to get through. We did have the zoo lined up for special order of business, and they had kind of an emergency scheduling issue late, I believe, yesterday. So, we didn't have a chance to get anyone else lined up to present. So, we are going to go right into consent agenda and then a lot of resolutions. But I will call on Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda of today's date.
Moved by Commissioner Bukowski, support by Commissioner?
Support by Breevy.
Breevy? Questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I don't see any.
Any hands raised? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Spark.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Fantastic. We are on to resolutions on item seven of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy for a motion for 7A.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 82 of today's date, the Child Care Fund Annual Plan for Approval and Appropriation from Circuit Court.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner?
Melton supports.
Melton, questions or comments on Resolution 82 today? Don't see any hands, don't see any comments. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 82, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 82 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Clear on to 7B, and I will call Commissioner Breevy again.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 83 of today's date, Juvenile Mental Health Court Implementation Grant from the Circuit Court.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner?
Stuck supports.
Stuck, questions or comments on Resolution 83? Looking at the participants, don't see any hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 83, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton. Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas and zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 83 is adopted.
Great, we're on to Resolution 17. I'll call Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I will move Resolution 84 of today's date, which is the renewal of the Mental Health Court Implementation Grant.
Moved by Commissioner Bukowski, support by Commissioner?
Support by Sparks.
Sparks, questions or comments on Resolution 84? It's like Commissioner Bukowski has a question?
A comment, Chair, thank you. I just wanted to thank Wayman for following up after last week's Finance Committee meeting, providing a few more details from Andy Thalhammer at the Circuit Court, what this money goes for. So, again, as I noted, it's a renewal and good things happening in these specialty dockets. So, again, thanks for the additional details, and let's keep doing good things.
Great. Commissioner Stuck.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. I also support this, obviously. I think it's a great program to move forward with. I would just encourage just to continue to look for ways of expanding this model into our district courts, where I think it can have equal, if not greater, effects.
Any other questions or comments on Resolution 84? Does it appear to have any other comments? Don't see any hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 84, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein. Commissioner Ponstein.
Did he get accidentally muted?
Commissioners Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 84 is adopted.
Great, we seem to be having some audio issues. So, just bear with us, everyone, and we may have to... Lisa, you keep getting like I hear you and then I don't. So, just know that you might have to ask up a few times.
No problem.
He's got to get... Our audio is weird today, so.
If I don't get somebody, I'll catch them on a second time around.
Okay.
Another chance, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are on to 7D, and I will call Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I move a time of Resolution 85 of today's date. It is to authorize the purchase of the property at 1434 Bradford Street Northeast. It comes to us from Facilities Management.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner?
Support by Sparks.
Sparks? Questions or comments on this resolution? Don't see any hands. Any questions, comments? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 85, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 85 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 7E, and I will again call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thanks, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 86 of today's date, Health Fund Budget Appropriation for 2020-2021 from the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner?
Bukowski.
Bukowski, questions or comments on Resolution 86? Don't see any hands. Don't see any chat. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 86, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas and zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 86 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 7F, and I will call Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move forward the Resolution 87 of today's date for Kent County Community Action Appropriation from Kent County Community Action.
Thank you, Commissioner Sparks. Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner?
Stuck supports.
Stuck, questions or comments on this issue, on this resolution? No hands. No chat. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 87, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 87 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to Resolution, item 7G, Resolution 88. I'll call Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Madam Chair Bolter. I would like to move Resolution 88 of today's date. It's the project agreement for the purchase of Chief Hazy Cloud Parkland from the Parks Department.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner?
Support by Jones.
Jones, questions or comments on Resolution 88? Looks like Commissioner Ponstein has his hand up.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. My question is probably for Wayman or someone in the Parks Department, and you don't need to give me the answer of it today. But, you know, I saw previously the Bradford property was purchased at a smaller amount. As we go forward with these mega regional parks, a lot of these are located within townships. And the price of these properties are going up drastically, and the remaining parcels to complete this area, I'm sure will be the same amount, if not more. I know we've always been told the benefits of parks, which I agree with, but there is something that affects the township, and that's part of their tax base is going to be taken away. Has there ever been any studies of how long it takes park staff a positive impact on the area that they're put in? And how long does it take for them to recover their tax base?
Very good question. We can trail back with the park staff and maybe the township and maybe equalization and try to see... We can get you an answer to that question, but that's a good question. We'll see what we can do to help you with that answer.
Thank you so much. Like I said, no hurry. I'm fully supportive of the purchase, but that's just an issue that I know comes up with the PIL problem and the federal government. So, thank you.
Commissioner Stuck.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. I guess my question is also to Wayman. I understand that there are a number of other acquisitions that are at least anticipated part of this. What's the current schedule for any additional acquisitions over the course of the next couple of years?
Is Dan or Al Diano on the line? I think they can give you an update on that. There's a sale pending, as you see on the map. Right in the middle, there are the yellow shaded area in your documents. Dan, can you comment on that?
Certainly. Morning, Commissioner. We're in the process of closing, working with a seller in the parcel colored yellow that we will hopefully close on sometime in October of this year. And then this next parcel that you're voting on today, we would close on that hopefully Q1 or Q2 of next year. And we do not anticipate any other purchases along the river for Hazy Cloud Park.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Just two quick questions. The 30% that's being put forward by local sources, is that Ada Township?
I don't believe so, but Dan, can you add to that?
That will be coming from the current property owner.
And who is that?
Ada Holdings.
I wonder if in the future, we could get on these just information about who we're exactly buying this from and I guess what local sources means. Better information makes it easier to understand exactly what's happening here. So, that would be appreciated, just a little bit more detail on who we're buying this from and what the local sources are. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Doesn't look like any other hands are up. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 88, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonnk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 88 is adopted. You're on mute, Chair Bolter.
Sorry. The dots are barking.
All right, I move Resolution 89 of today's date, Title 4E Grant from the Prosecutor's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner?
Ponstein.
Ponstein. Ponstein. Questions or comments on this resolution? Don't see any hands. See any participants? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution eighty-nine, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution eighty-nine is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to seven I, and I will again call Commissioner Breevy.
Thanks, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution ninety of today's date, Emergency Management Performance Grant from the Sheriff's Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner.
Wooden, support by Wooden.
Wooden. Questions or comments on this resolution? Don't see any hands. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution ninety, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution ninety is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution, Resolution seven J on our agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Madam Chair Bolter. I would like to move Resolution number ninety-one of today's date. It has to do with the State of Michigan Secondary Road Patrol Grant from the Sheriff's Department.
Support by Ponstein.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Ponstein. Questions or comments on this resolution? Looks like Commissioner Wooden has a question, a comment? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick clarifying question on the state. How does the state determine how much funding are we eligible for? Is it based on population? Is it based on mileage of our secondary roads in the county? What formula determines how much money we get from the state from this program? Thank you.
Good morning.
The sheriff's offices, oh, there's Michelle.
Yeah, I can answer that. There was a formula that was established at the inception of the four sixteen grant program, and at the time, it was a balance between population and then just an amount for every county. That formula is still in place today, so for us, it is quite outdated because our population has grown so much since the late sixties, but that's what it is.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments on Resolution ninety-one? Don't see any hands. I don't see any chat. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution ninety-one, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Melton. Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution ninety-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That may have been the quickest we've been through this many resolutions in quite some time.
Indeed.
All right, we are on to item eight on our agenda. It is public comment related to any county matter. Wondering if we have any hands raised in participants? Do you know that?
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Address the commission.
Sure, please. Hi, Kevin.
My name is, hi, my name is Kevin Polston, Superintendent at Godfrey Public Schools, or thirteen twenty-four Burton Street, Wyoming, four nine five oh nine, just representing our Kent Intermediate Superintendents Association, and just profound thanks for the commission's approval of grants for schools and every student in Kent County, private, public, for using CARES dollars to give back to learning, and so is the challenges of bringing back schools has been something that we haven't ever experienced before. To have the support of the commission and to allocate funds to do that means a lot, and so some specific examples that I can give from Godfrey Public Schools is we've added nursing services so that our students have a full-time nurse in our district, and so a couple of years ago, we had reduced nursing services due to budget cuts, and so we were able to add a full-time nurse, and that full-time nurse will serve all five of our school buildings, all eighteen hundred and fifty of our students, two-thirds of which are Medicaid eligible, so healthcare is significant during this pandemic, and school is a point of access for our healthcare for our students and families in our community, and so we're excited to partner with Spectrum Health to provide that service to our district so that our kids can have point of contact, not just for access, but it's going to help their social emotional well-being, it's going to help help their attendance at school, it's going to help get them quicker access for services, and so I just really appreciate the partnership from the commission and your support of our public schools. Thank you.
And Kevin, I can probably speak for most of the board, especially the parents on the board. We appreciate all your work to get them back into school in person if possible. We really appreciate everything you guys are doing. It was probably complete chaos this summer trying to figure out what you were doing, so we really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Looks like we have another person, Scott Smith. Scott, are you there?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chairperson and other members of the commission. My name is Scott Smith. I serve as the Superintendent with Cedar Springs Public Schools. My wife Sarah and I live in Cedar Springs. Our address is two two seven one Quarter Horse Drive Northeast, and that is in Cedar Springs. We too just greatly appreciate the willingness of the commission, but more importantly, the Kent County Health Department, to work with districts and provide us with essential support. This is a task that we cannot do alone. It takes many hands to lift this, to lift this work, and so we're just greatly appreciative of the support that we've received from the commission and from the Health Department. Similar to Kevin, ways that Cedar Springs Public Schools will be utilizing the dollars that were shared through the commission, we too will be providing health aids in all of our, in all of our buildings, and the funds that we'll receive are going to cover over half of those, over half the costs of those positions, and so we'll be able to provide, you'll be able to help provide healthcare support for over fifteen hundred students in Cedar Springs, and we just are so appreciative of your willingness to partner with us on this and so many other things. The work is tremendous, and we know that together we can do this and make a difference in the lives of our students, our families, and our staff, and so again, we just thank you for your willingness to partner with us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for taking the time to address us today. Sometimes we do this work and we don't really know what the effects are. We hope for the best, and it's really nice to get that feedback to know kind of where it's going and how it's utilized, and we really appreciate again all your your work and your efforts, and thank you so much, and it's a great example of how our community can collaborate and the different governmental entities can work together, so thank you so much. Appreciate, appreciate you. Don't see any other hands up and participant. Do we have anyone else in email?
No, we do not.
Okay, looks like we can move on from public comment then to commissioner reports. Any official reports today? Give you guys a couple of minutes. Looked by Commissioner Breevy.
Thanks, Chair Bolter. Just a brief update from the Board of Public Works. We will be restarting our Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We met once before COVID back in March, and it's a group of some pretty busy people, mayors and other community leaders, and so we'll be restarting those likely in October to gather their input on how DPW should move forward in terms of rates and, you know, other suggestions and policies, so I look forward to continuing those conversations.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work and all the updates from DPW, because it's certainly an important issue for all of us to know and our constituents, so thank you. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. A few notes from yesterday's Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority meeting. The board approved the funding for the planting of two hundred and fifty additional trees, and I noted that while the survival rate in many of these situations for trees that are planted around cities is in the fifty to sixty percent rate, the survival rate for downtown trees has been around seventy to eighty percent, so a lot of care and attention are paid to those, and we continue to increase the tree canopy in downtown and all over Grand Rapids. The next item is a little bit rough to report. It means that the holidays are somewhat around the corner, but we did approve funding for additional holiday lighting. That happens every year, but there are efforts to continue to expand that as it is well received by the, by the public. There was funding for lighting repairs on the Blue Bridge. There was significant investment several years ago. Some of that needed to be repaired. And then funding for a grant for removing the canopy on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Building, which many of you may recognize if you've walked down Monroe Center. That will be coming off pretty soon. The visuals that we saw will make it look very nice, I think. And then finally, we heard a report on work being done to make downtown more accessible to people with varied abilities and approved additional funding for that work. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Talon. Appreciate that. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. This past week, I was joined by Commissioner Tom Antor. Both of us sit on the Substance Use Advisory Committee for the LRE. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. We had a report on trends and kind of a poll where we sit in the community on substance abuse. I'll pass that report on to Pam, and if anyone wants it, she can forward it to you. The only thing I wanted to highlight is you always look for upticks and changes so they can be monitored. One thing that caught my eye and several others is the uptick of marijuana use in the youth, and it wasn't a large uptick, but it is definitely going in the wrong direction, and we'll be watching that. One of the interesting facts when they dove deeper into that question and issue is that the kids' reasons for using, the number one reason was because they felt that their parents thought it was okay to use marijuana, and I know during that ballot initiative, a lot of talk was the effects of that, and I think this is one of the effects that may be negative. You know, we, you know, we do spend money on education and programs to try to inform the public, but it's just an issue that I think we're going to need to watch, and and I'll keep you updated, but once again, if anyone wants a copy of that report, there's other issues that were looked into. I'll just forward it on to Pam, and you can request one from her, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein and Commissioner Antor for that work. Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Also, thank you to Commissioners Ponstein and Antor for sitting on that committee on our behalf, so I'll hold off on a more detailed report on what's going on at the Lake Shore Regional Entity until the next meeting, but just with respect to Network one eighty, we are going to present our budget to the public next week, Monday. Encourage if anyone has interest in following up or comments on that, that'll be at four forty-five, virtually, about four forty-five on Monday, and it is, for the first time in my experience in sitting on that board, a genuinely balanced budget that will, will not be a challenge for us financially and fiscally, so it's a good time. Thank you.
Any other commissioner reports today? I don't see any other hands before we move on to miscellaneous. All right, let's move on to item ten on our agenda miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous today? Raise your hand. Looks like Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to, for those who are listening in, just a reminder again, we went through an awful lot of items this morning to be voted on. Just a reminder that we have these reports, sometimes a full week, but certainly days before our meetings, have a chance to go through them, ask questions, and so that when we come and all say yes, it's not because we're just sitting here and we don't know how to say no, or we don't know how to say anything else, it's because we have already come very well-prepared and informed by our administration and those who are involved in each of the action items. So again, just a reminder to the public, because I think when we go through something like that so quickly, it seems like we, we're just trying to get through the meeting, and that is not at all true. Just wanted to point that out.
Great comment, Commissioner Melton. Appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to touch base during miscellaneous on the Folsberg Virtual Arts Festival, which will be September nineteenth through the twentieth. They have a quilt that they raffle off. You can go ahead and look at the map on www.lolartsmi.org, which includes links to explore the artwork, music, children's creations, craft demonstrations, and more. The quilt is really stunning this year. I'm actually going to make sure I buy my fair share of tickets. It's titled Blue Lagoon.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Commissioner Ponstein's comment about the uptick in use of marijuana by youth prompts me to to just reflect that. I have talked about this a few times in the past and don't know that I'll have a chance since I won't be around next year, but we will start to see dollars coming in from excise tax revenue coming in, probably next year, I would suspect, to the county, and it's always been my interest and hope that the commission will give serious consideration to allocating a significant portion of that revenue to youth education and to education of everyone on the dangers of cannabis use by young people. I was supportive of legalizing cannabis, but recognized the perils just as with any other substance use or for youth, and hope that we can spend some of those dollars next year on educating everyone on the long-term effects from use of cannabis by youth. Thank you.
A great point, Commissioner Talon. Appreciate that. Commissioner Stuck.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolter. I wasn't sure whether this was a report or miscellaneous, but I made this comment at the Legislative Human Resource Meeting this past week, but I would also make the comment to all of the commissioners that our board and authority and committee appointment process will close applications at the end of September, so I'd encourage all of you, to the extent that you are able and willing to do so, to go out to your constituencies and to encourage folks to get their applications in on time and to participate so that we have a full cadre of applications for all of our positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I, yesterday was out in downtown Caledonia getting ice cream with one of my boys, and I was talking to the owner. It was a small business, and I had asked him if he was familiar with the small business grants that we had available. He wasn't at all, and he's like, oh, you know, we were shut down for a couple of months because we couldn't, you know, serve our customers, and, you know, so we missed out on that revenue, and he just said, but that's not, you know, something we really need. We're doing okay. But I told him, I'm like, you're, you know, the type of person, the type of business that needs this, and I said, you support our community in many ways, and you're qualified for this. So, you know, talking to different business leaders in my community, I hear time and time again, like, oh, you know, we don't really need that, but, you know, that's what this money is for. It's to support these businesses and so they can continue, you know, their service. And I just wanted to remind all of you to reach out to the businesses in your districts and, you know, talk about this, because people are thinking they don't really need it, but, you know, they're qualified for it, and we need them to continue to survive. So it's pretty important to get the word out, and also, you know, talk about the PPE program, which we, you know, have available as well. So keep pushing that information out, please.
That is a great point, and I experienced the exact same thing in my district when I went outbound, and And a lot of people are just used to getting by on their own, so it is almost difficult to get them to understand that they need, they could access this assistance. And so I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank the two superintendents who came in today and offered their thanks for the appropriation we've made under the guidance of the COVID Relief Subcommittee to appropriate two million. It struck me after, the weekend after we appropriated the original two million, I saw on the news that our friends on the east side, Oakland County, appropriated a sizable portion of their remaining CARES Act balance, twenty-eight million towards public schools. And to assist with the same things we're talking about, nurses, technology, ways to help our districts adapt so that our kids can successfully learn in this current environment. One thing that also struck me was the fact that they did, in fact, deploy a two-tier method for distributing those funds. Both one, where part of the money is appropriated on a per pupil basis, but then the other one based on that district's number of economically disadvantaged students. And that was something I thought was important to stress because, you know, as I've mentioned in the original one, when we're appropriating two million and we're essentially starting out an idea, I think it makes perfect sense to just distribute it based on per pupil. But if we are to ramp this up, and the reason I'm saying this now is I can't join the subcommittee meeting tomorrow or after this because I have work conflict. But I do think we should stress if we are to increase additional funds, that some evaluation of our districts with low-income students and economically disadvantaged students is important. Those are districts with fewer resources to begin with, and they're not just Grand Rapids Public Schools. I pulled off the State Department of Education's site, and there are a number of our districts outside of the city of Grand Rapids that have high shares of economically disadvantaged students. Kent City Public Schools, Kelloggsville, Kennewah Hills, you know, Comstock Park, Wyoming, and Godwin Heights, as the gentleman mentioned, the number of Medicaid-eligible students all have over half of their or close to half of their population being economically disadvantaged. And I just think we should take into account the fact that those who are economically disadvantaged right now, including those students, are, have increased obstacles. And from there, we should take that into evaluation when distributing funds. Thank you very much for the time, and best of luck in your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wooden. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to tie on to what the superintendents were saying at, you know, the different ways that the county is helping them. And I just want to highlight, I know there's a report that's probably at the admin office of all the collaborations that we do through the county. And it's not so much that, you know, we give out money. The services that the county provides have lots of tentacles. You know, schools aren't just benefited by this grant that we just sent them. You know, our Sheriff's Department, our Health Department, our mental health services, all benefit different parts of the community in different ways. And it's just not, you know, that's just Kent County. Our reach in the community is quite large, and I appreciate all the work of all the staff members in all of our departments because we assist local units in a lot of ways. And, and I don't know if we toot our horn enough, but the work of our employees definitely makes Kent County a great place to live. And you can go to some counties around this country where those cooperative efforts don't exist. In fact, sometimes there's some hostility. So I appreciate the work that our staff does and all of our employees that make Kent County the place it is to live, grow, and have a business.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too have found quite a few businesses that have not applied that, that were eligible to because they have set money aside, kind of like a rainy day fund. They didn't feel comfortable asking for funds at this time. A lot of them decided, you are national debt. I know some of the money's coming from the state, but they didn't want to add to that. And I applaud them for that, you know, they have money set aside, and they're getting through the best they can. One question I had regarding the CARES money that's being funneled through the right place, I was wondering if the people that may have applied and are not getting those grants, if those businesses could be notified either way. Let's say if they, they, they don't get any money, maybe told why their application was rejected. I think it's really important for full transparency. That way we know that people aren't being picked, you know, like winners and losers, this should be based on eligibility, but without knowing why they got rejected, we'll never know. So I'd like to see that put in place if we could, or if someone could reach out to the right place and see if they're going to be notifying people that may be rejected for whatever reason that they're notified of such, just for transparency. Because this is something that's kind of come up, you know, from out of nowhere, and this is all uncharted waters for a lot of people. And I just think it's important because of that, that everybody is notified, whether they get the grant or not, and reason why. So that would be my ask if the administration could help on that matter. And thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Antor. And we can definitely pass that along to both the right place and the chamber in our subcommittee in another hour. And happy to do that.
Thank you.
A lot of sense, yep. Any other miscellaneous today? I don't see any other hands. Okay, I just had a couple. Continue to open a meeting in person, distanced as soon as possible. I just want to be sure that we're following all the safety guidelines and the governor's executive orders. I feel like a lot of people would be uncomfortable wearing a mask the entire meeting, which I've been told if we have more than ten people that we would have to do that. So we're going to continue to do the Zoom virtual meetings until we get additional guidance on that. Have a quick housekeeping item on the CARES Subcommittee. Commissioner Morgan had requested, due to time constraints, to be removed from that Subcommittee, so I'll be replacing him with Commissioner Ponstein, and that will start as of today. And that is all I had for today. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Bolkowski?
I make a motion that we adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, until Thursday, September twenty-fourth at eight thirty AM.
Moved by Commissioner Bolkowski, support by Commissioner.
Support by Breevy.
Breevy, on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All pones. We are adjourned until Thursday, September twenty-fourth at eight thirty. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.